For candidates out there. Out, out of order, okay. So, uh, so candidates, uh, here for the police chief interview. Uh, we have four candidates. Uh, Mark Badwood, Grace Iranian, Nicholas Nicholas Koder, and Elton Young. We'll go in that order. You all get five minutes. And the way that we do this is that as candidates for the police chief of police, you can stay outside until your call, and we can even have those interviews one-on-one. Uh, then we can do it. So, other than that, uh, just go grab lunch, and, uh, we'll, 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 we'll connect. So, give us about twenty minutes to get this whole process set up, and, uh, wait, I'm sorry. Give us like ten minutes to grab your lunches and all that, and, and, sorry. And, and, uh, and then go ahead and come back and tell us what, so, so go grab your lunches. Take a break, we're gonna go. Councilor, is there any questions for Mr. Badwood at this time? Counselor, go ahead.
Thank you. As a fellow counsel, I have a real quick question for Mark Badwood. Uh, communication and open, open educational schools, and abilities to work with people to achieve personal progress and organizational goals. If I'm asking for this question is, what are your intentions? Should you be selected to create community policing within your program? We need to look at seeing what type of, how many officers we have, and I do believe that by having the officers get back into the communities and start interacting with community members, that kind of start helping to, uh, rebuild the community police aspect of the program. Uh, but, you know, whenever I was an organized investigator, I, I had a lot of cases I resolved because I had community members come forward and tell me that this is what happened. And we're looking at somebody who's a citizen, but, uh, information on the citizen's right was good, so we were able to solve crimes, and that's what it's going to take, is we need to be able to visit with, uh, the community members so that we can get them resolved.
Thank you, Mark. There is my ask for that question because we don't have any type of community commission on our reservation. And I, that's really a high point for me when we learn modules with that with some of the issues that, of those questions that happen in our course, that we learn about without law, without need, you know, we don't see that anymore, so that's...
Thank you, Chair. And good afternoon, Mr. Badwood. I just have two questions. Can you explain how you would handle allegations made against a police officer by excessive, excessive force or conduct on becoming a...
If I understand your question, that has to do with officers' complaints, and is that what you're asking?
How would you handle allegations made against a police officer?
Well, now, uh, I guess I'm going to think of looking at is that, uh, within the organization, we need to be able to, uh, form a unit with, uh... Before, a little bit better, a little bit faster, uh, in, uh, improvement of services that are private and officers, why to the people. I guess what I'd like to do is set up, uh, the officers to get them to attend, uh, like in the teens, like looking for burglary suspects, investigate burglaries, who like any drug dealers, traffic enforcement, the western violent units within uniform division to help train them, get them to training that's needed for them to be able to do their jobs. And I feel that within the program, if we start getting straight, set up, uh, training for supervisors, so that we have better leadership within the organization, get that in charge, will cause, uh, the future, I'd be able to come out as a, uh, as a Chief of Police within the program. So I think that would just need to do some work on improving the program and maybe a few lot of training. That also need to be able to do what you're, what you're charged to. And also the supervision we need to try to get the supervisors to, uh, do their part with, uh, guards, to, to help improve the program. I'm not sure what my board is, he's up or not.
Okay. Uh, councilors, is there questions for Mr. Badwood at this time? Counselor, go ahead.
Thank you, because I feel like, uh, counsel, I have a real quick question for Mark Badwood. You know, communication and open, open educational schools and abilities to work with people to achieve personal program and organizational goals. If I'm asking for this question is, what are your intentions? Should you be selected to, uh, create community policing within your program?
We need to look at seeing what type of, how many officers we have. And I do believe that by having the officers get back into the communities and start, uh, interacting with community members, that that kind of start helping with, uh, rebuild the community police aspect of the program. But, you know, whenever I was an organized investigator, I, I had a lot of cases I resolved because I had to community members come forward and tell me that this is what happened. And we're looking at somebody who's a citizen, but, uh, information that the citizen provided was good. So we were able to solve crimes. And that's what it's gonna take, is we need to be able to, uh, visit with, uh, the community members so that we can get this resolved.
Thank you, Mark, very nice to ask that question because we don't have any type of community policing on our reservation. And I, that's really, uh, a high point for me. When we learn law, it was what that was, uh, some of the issues that, of those questions that happen in law, which when we learn about, get out the law, get out the need, you know, seeing that in your life.
Hey, counselor, is there additional questions for, uh, counselor, Ms. Badwood?
Thank you, Chair, and good afternoon, Mr. Badwood, I just have two questions. Can you explain how you would handle allegations made against a police officer hiding excessive, excessive force or conduct on becoming?
If I understand your question, that has to do with officers' complaints and is that what you're asking?
How would you handle allegations made against a police officer?
Well, now, uh, I guess I'm going to think of looking at is that, uh, within the organization, we need to be able to, uh, form a unit with a, a police officer, maybe supervisor, and somebody who, uh, may add any part to attack these complaints that come in, to see what, whether would further, uh, action if they do, then we would, uh, start looking to see what's going on. And then if the violation is such that, first, we should be able to know what be happening. Or else we would, uh, find out, we need to send that person with more training, or we need to send them to EAP to help, uh, correct his, uh, the officer's behavior.
What would be the allegations?
That's it, uh, but have a little committee within the organization to look at it. It won't be, excuse me, it won't be the same officers all the time, it would be surrounded. People that would recall me and have them look at the complaints. As, as a chief on the counter, we will now have, we will have that committee. Look at it, see what they say, and then see how the best way to address that problem.
And then my last question is, what, excuse me, what role can you, what role can an uncertified police officer occupy within the department?
Could you read that, please?
What role can an uncertified police officer occupy within the department?
According to what, uh, law enforcement handbook says, is that a police officer has one year from the date of appointment to become a certified police officer. So though in our current time, that police officer that is uncertified could be used kind of like in, uh, situations where there's a bit of crowd control, uh, dirt traffic, uh, even observers.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you, counselor, and additional questions for Mr. Badwood? Uh, counselor, go ahead.
Mark, Mr. Badwood. What do you see is the most immediate problem right now in the state of Halloway and our, our, uh, address?
I would think that it would be manpower. And but right now, the police department is at its maximum with the personnel that they have for the, the law court. And I think what I would say that we need to do is to see if, uh, the Department of Justice, I think that's available for, just to test with just a police officers. And what the other thing is, is we need to take that grant, we're not just talking about negotiating with the PIA. So if we have five grand, we have fifty officers. At the PIA, we'll be able to give us, uh, fifty positions at the end of that, uh, that grant, the grant so that we can continue having additional officers in the program. So that's my way of, I think, how we could, uh, do that, uh. First, did you go and ask the question about community policing? I think that's a problem that needs to be addressed as well. The officers need to be out there, and, uh, we would, the community. So that way, it'll open, uh, the cover. The W E was against them. Those, to keep things small, crime solved, if people, I don't know what happened, and when you have taken their trust and then provide that information to us, then we can resolve crimes that occur. So, you know, that's, I think the two of the main things that need to be addressed right now.
Thank you. Second, counselor, uh, Gerald, Junior, and then counselor, uh, Hillwood.
Thank you, Mr. Jerry. Uh, one question that I have, and, uh, counselor, Younger Junior, uh, honestly, asked quite a bit of it, um, when it comes to the police force, what would you say is our greatest need, other than manpower, is it investigation, investigation techniques? Investigative services? What about protective services? Or a better court system?
Okay, this is what I, your question, the best way to be able to address, uh, all that is to train. You know, we have to give these guys the training that they need. Let's say for sexual assault victims, they have to go to some training to, uh, how to deal with those victims. How do they investigate sexual assault? So that's something that they have to, the information that they're gonna need to get. The training, so I think the training is gonna be one of the things, to be able to accomplish the investigative part of it and to make, uh, presentation to the prosecutor, make it more for the system so that we get conviction of, of that crime.
Okay, so a follow-on question with that would be is that we would need more training in all these services, are you, are you trying to make? Or would you like to see a more well-rounded police force? Or would you like to see larger units within that police force that have more specified training?
I would like to see a police department that has all the police officers that have knowledge in different areas so that we can go forth and have a good, good department. And I think that by, uh, forming that training and, you know, having teams like we talked about within the organization, then that, that would be, that would help us accomplish that, and then the training. There's, there's grad section, we need for training, State of South Dakota has been trained. And that's why we came on us. Active reconstructionists by going to that class. And I think by going to the State of South Dakota, being an active reconstructionist, that we have cost about thirty thousand dollars. But I tell you what, uh, uh, State of South Dakota, that was a free cross. All it did need for was a trip over there and back. So we just didn't look for a free trade.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, counselor, counselor, Younger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, Mr. Badwood. I have, uh, one question for you. You are selected for the position, how would you look into getting more funding and what steps would you take to after more funding from our officers?
Again, with the six thirty contract, there's provision within the order that, uh, that states that the position could be filled. Once they're contracted to the government, that rate of the government and community are better. So with that, with that statement there, I think that we can go through the government and try to get, uh, additional dollars through, uh, the six thirty law that's out there. And then the other thing I just talked about earlier was a grant for the police officers. But wherever you do the grant for a police officer, that grant's gonna last for a certain period of time. And if you don't have anything to help figure that, uh, additional officers, they're gonna be after you when you're before. So, you know, we're gonna have to kind of negotiate with the government, the PIA, trying to, uh, get those additional dollars. The other thing that I feel is that, uh, by the government not, uh, not directly with Washington, is that, you know, a lot of time is wasted. Because wherever you ask the PIA for, uh, you ask them a question, what that does, it takes thirty days for them to get it to
And what's to do with the dollars? And once we do that, we need to make sure that Congress appoints that one to each country. Because what's happening is a tribe board in Washington asks for money, and law enforcement gives money. That money doesn't go to the tribes. The FBI can play different positions to a different people. That really all possible necessary positions. So by asking for money, then ask that they ensure that that the good dollars that are pointed for law enforcement for tribe organizations be given to the tribe organizations.
Thank you. My next question is, in your past years of working as a acting chief of police as well as a chief of police in other agencies in different areas, do you believe that you have a good working relationship or would you have a good working relationship with other jurisdictions on investigation and have prevention of suspects? Such as drug and meth dealers and drug makers?
I hope that I'm able to ask, what's necessary is to be able to put the outside agency off reservation. And then, uh, you know, uh, how can I put it, uh? Yeah, and I think that's what we need to do is we need to have, be able to, uh, coordinate, you know, like I said, give information to the community to help with the investigation, the drug dealers and bootmakers. And then I think, you know, bootmakers, if they're a jurisdiction or the tribe, the tribe will be able to, we will be able to, he will not want a reservation to tell them. He come down to reservation, then we'll be able to work for that. Drop, we will do that. As a rescue, of course, because they had a federal violation, then we could cost reservation to come in. Let's say they live in Roosevelt, Roosevelt. Uh, but I don't think that, uh, they are picking from, uh, their reservation fleet from, fleet from out of the city or from South Dakota, which will make really affect, you know, felony, felony crime, and because of reservation, I don't think we should be asking for those type of criminals. Uh, and I understand that there is extradition laws, so maybe we need to pick these people up, take them, put them into custody of the tribe to help them have an extradition hearing. Send them to the federal law reservation, but I don't think it should be hard to open reservation, especially if it's a violent crime.
Thank you.
Good morning, Councilman, Councilman Arias.
Good afternoon.
That's good.
Um, a lot of big questions were asked at the end and everything, and I kind of missed my questions or answers that they were going to ask. I have one. Um, I don't know, it's the hardest question that we've been here with, but, uh, do you have any driver's license?
Uh, uh.
Do you have a driver's license?
Yes.
Okay, just checking. I was just saying, this is very funny, that's all.
Thank you, Councilman. This is Police Academy area. So, uh, so, um, um, councilor, is there anything else? Uh, or councilman, so I got councilman, uh, what do you, I'm sorry, councilman, do you want to, uh, councilman, clear?
Hello, Mr. Biden. With this, with this mess epidemic, breaking reservation, do you have any plans or strategies to combat these messes that's happening in reservation?
As far as, when I was a federal agent with the BIA, that was one of my duties was to investigate drug dealers, bootmakers. And I think that we can put a task force and go out these, then realize that working drugs in our, uh, at one time, there is a certain protocol that we have to follow to, uh, before we're able to, uh, check with the city attorney's office to see what they just did across this individual for collating or drug dealing. And if they're able to do that, then, then we will, uh, try to get a indictment on that individual. What was the tribal issues, uh, towards the tribal, that is one of the things that I think, uh, the problem, problem that needs to be addressed is the drug dealers.
Thank you. Uh, thanks, Councilman, uh, Councilman, clear.
Could I put my, what kind of working relationship would you set up with the local law enforcement entity?
I would work with, uh, I would, you know, I think that I have a good working relationship with just everybody that I currently contact with I. I see that by doing that, meeting with the sheriff, uh, through Nebraska side, sheriff from, uh, state side, South Dakota side, as we go back, et cetera, we have a good relationship. As long as it does not involve, uh, trying to do it through the sovereignty of the tribe, I put my judgment like that.
Do you believe that just turning the initiative over to the state without an education?
If it's a, if it's a tribal member, they have to go through the extradition process of the tribe to turn over to the state, towards a law member, with a law member that finally that we don't, that the state was looking for. Then we can turn over that individual to the state, and we just can't just, oh, we go in here and pick people up. Especially, we go with the tribe.
Thank you. I'm going, Councilman, I'm ready, please.
It says here that, uh, your credit law enforcement certification is lax. Would you be willing to go back to the academy?
I would go back and get my certification, perhaps, but not selected.
Well, that's one of the qualifications, as far as I'm asking, is you have to be credited law enforcement certification, so if you are selected, would you be willing to go back to the academy?
Yes, I'll go back.
Uh, thank you. Um, additional questions? Um, here, or you can sit down online, Mr. Badler, thank you for coming, uh, just to be able to, yeah, I have a seat outside. Um, so thank you, Mr. Badler. So the next one we have is Grace from Minnehorses. So if you want to, uh, screen, you're right here. Uh, thank you, Councilman, uh, or second, thank you, Mr. Minnehorses. I know she's her, she's, uh, she's in the Minnehorses initiative. Um, so, so the second one, there are five minutes. Councilor, ask a question, or you'll ask, you'll ask the last one, or on the council, if I ask questions. Uh, but, yeah, three minutes, please.
Uh, good afternoon. Um, first and foremost, I want to thank Jokash about for bringing me home today to be among everybody. Um, my name is Grace from Minnehorses, and my parents are Lorna and the late Leo Souper from Minnehorses. Uh, my mom is from, originally from Penridge, and my dad is from the Little League District. Um, my grandparents are the late Grace Pavier, late Lou Powell. Um, and my other set of grandparents are the late Daniel and Emily from Minnehorses, the late Emily Dawson, Hasenhorse, and the late Helena and Alvin Clark. Like I said, I'm a kid pushing them. Um, I really appreciate being brought in here today to be interviewed again. And one of the first things I want to, um, address is I was offered the chief of police position, which I accepted a few years ago. But I ended up turning it down, and the reason I turned it down was because my youngest son had just, um, gotten out of treatment. And I didn't feel good about leaving him alone up in North Dakota at that time. So I made a decision based on, on being a mother, to stay with him until he could get on his feet. And he's been sober and clean for four years now, so I can appreciate that. And that's the reason why I didn't take the job in the first place. Um, I wanted to talk a little bit about my experience. I've been everything from patrol officer, and I actually got my start in the Martin District with Councilman Dylan. And I've been a criminal investigator with the Rosewood Sioux Tribe for many years, so I was also the chief of police there. I worked up in the Rocky Boy in Montana, the Triple R Crime Reservation, as their supervisor, special agent for eight years. And currently the captain for the three affiliate tribes up in North Dakota on the Fort Worthville Minnehorse Division. I bring to you a lot of experience. I've had a lot of training in issues of leadership, specifically women in leadership. And I got the opportunity to go to training with a number of women from Penridge, who I was really impressed with at that time. Uh, I bring to you also, I'm a trained child forensic interviewer. I can do that, um, in child abuse cases. And while I was an investigator, my main, fourth, I guess you could say, was child abuse. Um, I took a lot of investigations into elder abuse, and worked a lot with the schools, establishing safe homes, worked with the child, uh, centers to make sure that the children are safe. I also have a lot of training in crime scene investigation. A lot of my training was geared towards criminal investigation, because that's what it is, investigations. If you take a look at my resume, you can see the different things that I've done throughout my career. Um, and I'm open to any questions that you might have right now.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Minnehorses, uh, Councilman, I'm going. How many, uh, years ago, um, leadership training began?
So the leadership training I've had, probably, I would say, about ten years. Um, yeah, probably about ten years.
Uh, thank you, uh, Councilman, uh, Councilman, uh.
Thank you, President Killian. Uh, good afternoon, Gracie.
Good afternoon.
Uh, I'm going to pretty much ask the same question a lot of candidates, but, uh, I know we have a shortage, uh, actually, where I have maximum manpower, just fifty-three officers. On the reservation. My, my question is, your communication and organizational skills and abilities to work with people? And to achieve personal program and work based on goals? These are skills that, you know, as a chief of police, you're aware of, the reason I'm asking that is, what, what would you do with the current manpower in terms of, uh, developing a community policing program?
Well, I'm a big believer, and I find out this works, is that you really have to be in tune with your districts. You have to attend meetings, you have to be in the schools, you have to be available for your people. You're living in your community, and you're not going to go out midnight and ask for help. We can't complain about that. You have to be out there. So I want to be able to provide the officers with that training so that they're open minded. And I understand that the force right now has a lot of young, excuse me, a lot of young officers who are easily to develop into that mindset. Um, I'm a big one for going into the districts myself. And we're, and I know that COVID hits, so the community meetings, we're there except for Zoom, but I'm a big one for being in the community. If one, we had a, um, a meeting, I want to be there so I can hear what's going on in the community. And to work closely with, uh, sergeants or whoever they have in the community, to get that district where they need. So it really comes to developing a person. Um, while I was in leadership training, they talk about, you know, looking at everybody's abilities and developing those abilities, not so much as a cookie cutter, but more to individual development. And that's what I'm looking at.
Uh, thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, Councilman, so Councilman, your, Councilman, you're.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All of us, uh, Minnehorses, uh, with this, uh, I think I was asking all the candidates the same question. With this, uh, mess, then with that split reservation, do you have any thoughts or strategies to combat, to combat what's going on?
Yes, again, it goes back to the community and a well-valued relationship with your drug investigation. And I understand you guys still have that, and it would really mean working again close with all the community. And to let the community know and feel comfortable to tell on someone, so that we can, um, you know, get that out of the community. And we really have to work close with the drug investigation and develop that more, and not, it has to be done right away. You can't wait another week or two weeks. It has to be done right away.
Thank you. Uh, and Councilman, uh, Councilman, your, Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilman, your, Councilman, your, Councilman, Spider, uh, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, Mr. Minnehorses.
Hello.
So my first question would be, you are selected, how would you look to get more funding, and what steps would you take to acquire more funding for more police officers?
Okay, I am, in my past years, when I used to work at Sandy Briscoe, I wanted to become a grant writer. And I would write grants, research, and as a grant writer, and I'd also go to different funding agencies. Of course, we always turned to the PIA, but there's other agencies out there, like Cormon Security, FEMA. Having, uh, coming, coming off the pandemic up in Fort Worthville, that was part of the COVID task force. And I learned a lot about funding from FEMA and what we could actually get, and there's a lot of stuff out there. So that's what I would do.
My second question is, in all your years of working at different, um, agencies and different positions, how would you see yourself as, uh, working in collaboration or working alongside other jurisdictions and investigations? Also, how would you have, have protection, protection of their suspects?
Okay, uh, excuse me, when I left Rosebud, of course, South Dakota, you know, we, we are a sovereign nation in and of ourselves, so that was the easy part. The hard part that I, when I left, it was to rock you, where I was at the state company. And so I would stand and argue with the state office, you don't have jurisdiction here, and I found out that they did. And up in Fort Worthville, it's the same thing, the state do have jurisdiction. So what I learned to do was to go and work with our supervisors. And we would come to an understanding, to the ones that were willing to do it. Come to an understanding that, okay, we're going to call you in with this investigation, and we're going to work it jointly. And that seemed to work for those two places, and that's. Part of the approach I'm going to take is to call in the supervisors, they'll have a sit down meeting. And not, you know, not, not do the meeting like four months from now, but right away, because that would have, that things have to be done right away, you can't wait.
Thank you.
Uh, thank Councilman, uh, Councilman, your.
Well, I think, my basically almost the same as Tyler, but, um, I don't know if you worked here, just on your break, and I feel sorry for you, working under Mr. Dylan. Thank you, um, do you see any working relationships that need to take place between the state and the vet, you know, I mean?
It can. Um, I've always had a good working relationship with, like, the FBI, the marshals. And I think there's a, a different mindset than when I first started. Um, they're open to us working with them and them working with us, but one thing that I put my foot down is when the feds come in, this is still our reservation, this is still, the crimes that happen here, these are our crime scenes. So I'm pretty adamant about that, that we take the helm, we take the lead in the investigation of what's going on here.
Uh, thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilman, your.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One question I was asked earlier, and relatable to your question I'm about to ask you is, what do you think personnel less armed is the greatest need for our tribal police force? Do you think it's better communications within the court system? Better investigative techniques? Or more specialized personnel?
Hmm, I think that, um, investigate, you just started the new investigation division, so that really does need to be developed more. And the more experienced they get, the better they'll get. To me, our investigators, they need to present the case to the attorney, they need to do the, present the case to the prosecutor. Um, they're the ones that need to take the helm in it, and they need to be on the forefront of it. So investigators do need a lot more training, and I'm sure they're going to get it. Um, communication with courts is imperative. The, the court administrator and the chief of police should be looking at it and need to cover. If the officers aren't shown up for court, they need to let us know so that we can figure out what's going on. If reports aren't being done, we need to know right away, find out why that's happening.
Thank you. Um, so I have two more follow up questions with, with what you just, just said. If we have more help in the investigative world, do you think it would be better for us to have a whole well, well, helping? Police force, what would you like, like them to remain a larger, more intact unit, especially in these specific areas such as investigations or internal affairs or what, what happened?
It would be a good idea if we had our own internal affairs, um, and we can get assistance from, from the I. And then the I just come and do it themselves. I would like to see us develop that area. And like I said, investigations, the more they do, the more, the better qualified they'll be. And that way they can run the case themselves all the way to court.
Okay, and then, uh, another, another follow on question is, uh, whenever, whenever we have these, these specialized personnel, and, um, do you, do you believe that these specialized personnel are, are imperative for the entire police force? Or do you think the entire police force could use some sort of training in various special, uh, special specific areas?
Um, some people are better at negotiating children than others. Um, some people are better at handling crime scene than others. Uh, everybody has specialty, and I would need to look at every person individually to develop that. But I also want to make known that it's because you're an investigator, that don't mean you can't go out and answer calls. Because at the bottom, at the end of the day, well, we're police officers, and so we all need to help patrol, we all need to help the investigation division. So even though we may develop into something like a child abuse investigator, you can still be a police officer.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank Councilman, uh, I got Councilman, spot out there, Councilman, your, Councilman, yours, who else? Uh, Councilman, uh, go ahead, go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, Mr. Minnehorses.
Hello.
Um, I have a few questions. They've already hit on six thirty-eight contracts and, uh, about to go law enforcement. Uh, my follow up question to that is, when should re-contracting requests be submitted to the funding agencies?
As soon as possible. Um, as soon as you can figure out what you want, what needs to get done, it needs to begin right away. Because I think a lot of times over the years, I've seen things kind of languish, not get done right away, and we need to sell them a lot of opportunities. Um, as a chief of police, that's your responsibility to get them, and so you need to get them right away.
Is there a ID specifically?
I can't remember. It's usually going to modify you, and it could happen inside during the year. So as soon as get the notification, it should be.
Thank you, and then, um, so let's give you the record, June thirtieth of each calendar year, reviewed by the I, um, I think about twenty days. So my, um, second question is, what role can an uncertified police officer occupy within a department?
I'm really a stickler of this, because if you let a certified officer out on the road, you put us in line, which means a tribe would be in line with you. So I'm sorry, but I'm going to put you wherever I can set you at that time. Usually what we've done in the agency, and now we put them in dispatch, so that they can learn, so that they can learn to appreciate the dispatchers. There's so many times I heard, hear, have heard officers get on and get after a dispatcher. That's not an easy job. I tried the dispatch a couple of times, and I messed it up, and so I appreciate the dispatchers. So I'll put them in dispatch, and finding someone to do office work, they'll go in there, tell they're adjudicated, and even then, and tell they're trained. Once they're trained, adjudicated, then they can go on the road, but they would also have to do a ride along with somebody, and they would, um, document their progress during the ride along, and then we'll gather with, um, the sergeants, and then we'll decide if they're ready, if they're road ready or not.
Thank you. My last question is, explain how you would handle allegations made against a police officer, i.e. excessive force, or kind of, I'm becoming.
First of all, I would, uh, put them off the road. I would, depending on allegations, um, I would have to take a look at the personnel, and see what kind of suspension, admin leave they could be put on until the investigation is completed. Uh, when I say take them off the road, that means taking the badge, the gun, everything from them.
Who do, who is that you reported to?
Um, it would probably be reported to, uh, the chairman and the vice chair, and to the judicial committee. And then once everything is done, and if it's sustained, then we can adjourn.
Thank you, that's all, Chair.
Uh, thank Councilman, uh, Councilman, your. Good morning, Gracie.
Great.
Good morning.
Afternoon.
Uh, you know, I know you haven't been around, I'm here, but, but I know you've probably heard some of the problems. What do you think is the most immediate problem in public safety down here, probably, from a dresser?
Uh, response time is one. Training is another. Training is big right now, especially, not, not just here, but everywhere. I mean, look at the, the showcase that's going on in Minneapolis right now, some trains. Um, response time, um, officers not showing up and calling.
Okay, and the last thing is, um, you know, this department works on CLEO standards. What is your knowledge of the CLEO standards?
Not much. Uh, I remember hearing about it, and it never been a opportunity to us.
And then last, what do you see as your offerings for public safety, don't you?
Uh, war officers, um, what did I call it? Stations in every district. A new, uh, reporting system. I'm not sure what kind of, uh, radio transmissions and stuff they have here, but, um, where I'm at, we went to Cirque, which is pretty good, and it seems to work real well. So I'll take a look at that, um, put that in place, and we'll have more personnel, because the more personnel you have in the community, the crime rate is going to go down.
Uh, thank Councilman, uh, Councilman, yours, and, uh, Councilman, a little hot question.
Okay, good afternoon, Grace.
Good afternoon.
Um, I know that they did talk about the response time, and that's really been an issue with a lot of, uh, community members that do call us sometimes, saying, I called several times and nobody responded, so. And I know, I'm not blaming the officers, but I think, you know, the lack of officers is what we have. And we try to make do with what, you know, what you have. So, um, due to that, you know, having the lack of officers, what's your plan, like, do you have a plan in place to go after more funding? Um, you know, your plan of, uh, gathering statistics and data to, um, get this funding in DC? And also, what's your plan, because there's two separate entities, it's like being a, uh, chief of police, being over the officers, you know, making sure that the, uh, services are being provided, like that, so forth. But then you also have the funding aspect. So what's your plan for both? You know, to, um, I know you're going to have to do. You know, to, um, I know you're gonna have to deal with the funding part and running a, um, police department.
With funding, um, funding out there is really statistic and data-driven. Uh, one of the first things that we do is sit down with whatever statistical persons is within the department, and we're gonna get the stats. And not just for, you know, the rest of, you know, not overall the reservation, but for each district and break it down. We can even break it down even more than that, to, you know, um, to the individuals in the community. Once they get that done, then we can start going through mon- money from funeral, like I said before, home and security, um, A B I A. Because I know they have money, they can give it to us. Um, so go after that. The other part is, you know, what we're seeing, the whole department, this is where you also rely on people who work, uh, you work with, the sergeants, um, the dispatchers, dispatchers know a lot. And so I'm always try, have a really good relationship with them, with all of our staff, so that they'll tell us what's going on. If someone's in trouble, that you're dealing with that right away. Um, one of the things I learned throughout the years is that when there's a problem, don't sit on it, you do what the community wants. That way it takes the headache away from you, and from you, it's the council people, and the chairman, and the vice chair.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Uh, then councilman, uh, councilman, a little hot question.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, first of all, good afternoon, Gracey. Thank you for coming, yes, today for this, uh, interview. Just listen to all of your, uh, answers as to what you can do, uh, if you were selected as chief of police. And I'm glad you, um, gave us your reasons why you couldn't take that first selection, that, right, which were appointed in as chief of police a while back. Uh, I just want to say that, um, uh, first of all, is I know we have fifty-three police officers, but, um, if it were, if you were selected and, um, you know, there may become times where your staff might be shorthanded, uh, are you willing to step in? You know, as, not only because you are chief of police, but as because of your experience and knowledge as a former police officer, that you can step in and help your fellow police officers out?
Of course, uh, and consider at the end of the day, whether you're the chief, lieutenant, sergeant, whoever you investigate, you're still a basic police officer. You're still a police officer at the end of the day. And if all you're gonna do is stand there and direct traffic, that's what you're gonna do. So I have no problem, we're not working side-by-side with the people.
Thank you. And, uh, you know, when you step into the shoes of a chief of police, I think that you know that, uh, with your experience and knowledge, that it's a twenty-four second job. It is just not a day to four-thirty, if you were holding your, uh, off-duty, you know, you're gonna get calls all hours of the night, you know, for whatever urgencies arise. So I think that, uh, with that being said, you know, I'm really hoping that, uh, if you were selected, that, you know, those are things that you know that, uh, will come up, but that you don't have to respond to middle of the night. And so I just wanted to put that out there to you, but also, uh, you know, to touch on the management of the budgets within the, uh, Department of Public Safety. You know, you still have to, uh, manage, uh, a budget for public safety, and work with the, the tribe's, uh, fis- fiscal accounting office. Um, because there's a law where charter, everything is under the, uh, O'Kawasoo Tribe's financial accounting office. Some parts have been barred, I hope that, uh, if you were to be selected, that you would get, uh, knowledgeable about that, um, process portion of how it's going to operate.
Okay, to address the first part of what you said, I have no problem getting calls two, three in the morning, my whole career has been like that. And I'm hoping that if I am selected, that I'll be able to move somewhere here on primary, so I'm easily accessible to the people, to you guys, to the public, to the victims. I have no problem living here, it would be the first time in my life that I'd be able to do that. Um, and so I live here, but you're not from here, so the first time I can say, yes, I am from here. Um, so I'm hoping to do that. And the other part of it is, um, I'm hoping that if I am selected, that I do get assigned somebody in the finance office who can take me through the budgets, what we have, and work closely with that person, because what I've learned, if you look closely and look well with your finance office, then, you know, it makes a lot easier for both of us. So that's what I'm looking forward to.
Thank you, and my last, uh, I guess, comment or, uh, to you, I guess, is, uh, when we talk about how are we going to bring money, or more money into public safety, I really believe that question applies with this governing body of the O'Kawasoo Tribe. We are the ones that have to take probably your plans or your recommendations, and, uh, you know, go to D.C. and fight for more funds. I think a lot of us, you know, have been through that in the past. And I think in this governing, uh, body here, there's, uh, a lot of them that are experienced in doing that. So I'm really hoping that, uh, we have some new counsel on board with some, uh, good knowledge and good understanding of how that process is. So we're hoping that if you were selected, that those are some of the things that, uh, could come forward to discovering money, and it would be our job as legislators to take that forward to fight for more funds for Department of Public Safety.
Yes, that would be awesome, thank you.
Uh, then councilman, and, uh, councilman, yes?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Um, there's been a culture of laziness that's developed on this reservation with law enforcement. And I've, I've seen it develop over the last year, and I've talked to my chief of body, and I've also, I've seen a lot of, like, this, this, this. So I worked up a chain, and it starts with the top, and, and I've talked to you. Current changes on that, and a lot of stress in that, and it's, uh, hasn't changed. Also, the community policing aspect, a lot of enforcement, we've gone off the wheel from that. Why not just control and do that?
Yep.
So, how would you address that with current officers now? Because there are, you know, we got young law enforcement, very impressive law enforcement. Um, I, I see the attorneys that they're looking to his best, and there are some, I think, that, 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 that's just somewhere. And it's okay with somebody putting it to me that way. I'm not that way, I don't like it that way, I mean, you know, so. How would you address that, that cultural laziness that's coming off this police department, with the community policing aspect of it?
Okay. What I want to do with that, and I've, I've seen it in my own department, I've seen it, uh, officers hiding behind houses or sidewalks, standing around with each other, hanging out with each other rather than out in patrol. I'd have to bring in some training, I'd have to bring in some people who have actually been out there, been in shootings, you know, lost partners to shootings, to get that point across to them. It's almost like the complacency has set in with them, and I need to get rid of that, because if you want to perform at the end of the day, you better be aware. And having worked with you, and I've seen you work, you know, but you never stood out. And we'd have to instill that in our older officers, because our older officers, they, they get lazy, you know? Um, and actually, younger officers are taken from the older officers, so they're gonna have to be retraining if they don't want to be. So a lot of training. I don't micromanage, I allow the sergeants, whoever the supervisors are, to kind of do what they need to do. But I will keep an eye out, if I see something's not being done, then I'll step in. But I do allow the staff, the supervisors to develop themselves, but if I'm not satisfied with it, I'll step in.
Uh, thank you, councilman, uh, councilman, additional questions for Mr. Minnie Torres? Seeing none, uh, I don't have a person on this room yet, so definitely on this, this, uh, standby, uh, outside. And then we'll have our decision after we, you know, and so.
I agree.
What do you want? Uh, security, you want to bring, uh, Mr. Corriere?
Okay, uh, councilman, so, uh, Mr. Corriere, uh, Mr. Corriere, you have five minutes, uh, to, 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 and then ask what they do, and they'll candidate, they've been making, uh, questions. And, uh, that's the second answer I can ask, but, but. My name's Nickless Corriere, um, member of, uh, I know in the reservation here, my dad is Dean Corriere, and my mom is Linda D. East. Been in law enforcement since two thousand and four. I have my own business and security management, armed security, uh, law enforcement services, and private investigations. Um, I've been the chief of police in Flandre, I was in Flandre for two years. Been supervisor for pretty much, say about nine years of my career, I got twelve years on the street, um, what I got. I've been doing security services since two thousand and six, I've been targeting Katrina Gustav, I mean, a lot of disaster places that I went and helped out. Um, there ain't too much that I really want to talk about myself, I just kind of want to bring up what I want to do here, and what I see on the streets that I've been working on for the last year. Um, I'm a lieutenant here right now, I've been here for a year, came back for a year, worked here previously for, for the week. Um, I just, I mean, there ain't too much I gotta say about myself. I just like to take questions with you guys, see what you guys want. The biggest thing that I want to tackle, and the biggest thing that I want to say right now, though, is that we have a drug problem, and it's huge. And we don't attack it as much as we should be doing. And we are relying on other government agencies to do this, and to me, I don't think that's right. It shouldn't take forty years to investigate a drug dealing, so they, so we can throw them away for forty. While we watch our people die every day. We're watching overdoses, there's heroin out there, fentanyl, hydropropan pills mixed with fentanyl. I mean, we're getting all this stuff off the street, but they ain't showing you guys this stuff. We're dealing with this stuff every night. Every day we get gun calls, shootings. I mean, this is, when are we gonna start attacking this as leadership? When are we gonna take control of this and attack it? Not wait for drug task forces to come in and do it for us? When are we gonna stand up as Dakota people and fight this with our communities? That's where we need to start attacking, that's where we need to go after. I'm tired of watching children suffer. I remember saying back in the day, they came to us, you know, almost, almost third to person, I've been doing it for years. And they said one time, when are you guys gonna start leading your children and stop, and stop letting other people lead? When are you gonna protect them yourselves? And I think we need to start doing that as leadership. But I just, I mean, I, I, we have an amazing police department, we have some amazing officers. We just need some good leadership and good help, and we can do some things, I know we can. But that's all I really have to say about myself.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Corriere, appreciate it. Um, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, um, so, uh, so first up is your, uh, councilman Rob Rigg, uh, councilman Youngman, councilman Carlo. Anyone who had it, uh, councilman, just need a break, councilman Steele, uh, before that, so, yeah, here you have my, um, so, uh, go ahead, uh, councilman, yes?
Uh, I got two questions, but first one, but, uh, I hear what you're saying, I understand where you're going from. Now, U S T police, how, with what you have here on reservation in our U S T department, how would you utilize them and fight this drug problem? What would your plan of action be?
I would implement a drug slash alcohol task force, made up of officers that are willing to come and help, that are willing to come out and work. You know, it's, I mean, it's a hard job. I, we've done it, and we did it, did our last place on that, and tried to deliver it, we had this image, waiting on drug task force, waiting on drug task force. Finally, we made it to initiative to start our own. And we started doing our own. And we made our, our own drug task force, we won't catch any drug task force from Great Green Turned, and other ones like that at first, but, once we started working together, starting in school, and we started getting cases, we started, you know, shutting down the traffic. I mean, it can be done here, it's not hard, it just needs to, it's a big area, I know it is. But if you have the officers that are motivated, which there is a lot that we have here that are motivated, that want to attack these drugs, that want to attack the bullying, but we're limited. I mean, it, but I honestly would, I would start our own task force and go after what needs to be done in these communities, and work with the communities. Our, our best asset on this reservation is the community members. If we worked together, we could accomplish so much. Back in two thousand and five, we had a big, big pandemic, pandemic that hit you know about. And what did we do? Whenever it hit, I went out to the communities, all of a sudden we started running these drug dealers off the street. Turned it back in our favor. We, we could do that again, but right now, our communities are scared. We have hours that are halved, phones are being taken over by meth dealers. And they're scared to report it, because they're scared they're gonna come break out their windows, or slash their tires, or... I mean, we, we can attack this, we just need to, we need to have the leadership to do it.
Thank you for that. The other part is the officers willing to work, and, um, I said this before, but if there's a culture of lazyness that's developed among the officers, because they're supervised fairly easy, and I know you've seen it, um, I'm working with the officers daily, and, and, at night, all the, the busy times. How would you address that?
Our biggest, uh, to me, the biggest thing for our officers is we have no structure. And like you said, you hit it on the head, the, the leadership. You know, you have to lead by example. I was taught that for years. One of my biggest, you know, mentors was Ken France, he always taught me that, lead by example. You know, if you want to come in, and if you want to be a supervisor, lead them like the way you want them, the way you want them to work, and that's what we need to do. They have no structure right now, though. All it is, is the candidates acting, gee, what, I mean, what do we have these young guys to look for, gee? There's nothing there, why ain't there corporals anymore, why ain't there sergeants anymore? Like, what is there for them to look forward to? I mean, you're coming into an organization where you ain't, you can't build yourself up. And that, that's where the laziness comes from. Because what are they working so hard for, what are they out there risking their lives for, just to be at the bottom of the barrel of their whole career? Like, we need to have a structure, we need to have a scale, for them to, that we can help bring them up. Training, training is huge. Everybody should be trained the same, not everybody wants to be a detective, not everybody wants to be a detective, not everybody wants to be. You know, everybody wants to do something, like me, I knew of drugs, I was huge on drugs. That's why I got the, uh, training for it. That's what I wanted to do, I didn't want to go to sea ice, I didn't want to do this, I didn't want to do that, micro-focus with drugs, because I see what it does to our people. And there's so much, like I said, we have so much potential in this department. We have so much young officers that are amazing officers. They just need to be pointing it in the right direction, and we can do some, we can do some big things here.
Thank you, uh, then councilman, uh, councilman Youngman. Good morning, Mr. Corriere, good morning. You know, I'm gonna restructure this question I was asking the same way before, but I see how passionate you are against the drug. You know, once you, you get into this position...
You know, once you, you get into this position, what is the overall problem that you think you're gonna come upon and how are you gonna address them?
As being the chief. I don't, I mean, honestly, I don't think the overall, uh, we don't ever have a problem with the chief, I think it's just a leadership standpoint. You know, we have standards, we need to follow those standards as police officers. Whenever that, those standards are broken, the leadership needs to step in and address those issues. What I would, and what I would like, and what I like my officers to do now is to, to violate those standards. You know, practice my policy. If, if you do that, if you're like that, I will back you a hundred and ten percent, but once you come off those standards, once you start violating the policy, then that's when we're having to do what I gotta do as a supervisor to, you know, address this matter. So, I, I just think it's the leadership standpoint, if you're a good leader, you, everybody will, you know, stand behind you. And it's the same key that the officer's stand behind them.
Okay, the second question is, you know, you talk about standards, and I think you guys know about the quality of standards. Um, you know, I've, I've never seen the whole thing yet, still looking for it, but we do continue to go back to those as they go along, I mean, because I still haven't seen the whole, okay?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a lot of standards, cause the standards is, is, is a good program, it can be accredited, if you get accredited, you are open for grants. Because you're accredited by the, the major organization, I mean, I think Rapid City is one that's accredited by the legal standards. And whenever you're accredited by them, you get a book open to the grants. I mean, and grants are huge, that's one thing, I mean, when was the last time a minor police department has had a grant? I mean, I, I can't think of one. That, where you could get equipped, officers, you know, all this other stuff, there, there's so much grants out there for suicide, community prevention, I mean, I mean, there's, there's a lot of grants out there that we should be going after.
Uh, thank you. Uh, thank councilman, uh, councilman, uh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I have one question for you, sir. Okay. And the first time that you spoke, you know, I, I took that to heart, I, you know, this deal about the drugs. You know, and I believe it too, that, you know, it's time to take this in our own hands. Instead of waiting for outside agencies to come in here, you know, and do the drug bust and all that. You know, our people are suffering, and our youth are dying because of this. But another area that I concentrated on is, you know, we're, we're, we're gonna probably give up permits here in the next few weeks on marijuana. So, we're gonna have an influx of people that are gonna be in here trying to sell drugs that are not grown by our own growers. You know, and there needs to be a dislocation between the growers that are actually legal doing this and the outsiders that are maybe beginning in here. So, you know, we gotta be on top of that whole game too. But do you believe in that you could implement some type of a drug enforcement immediately? The ammo, you know, is illegal drugs, because I, I'll guarantee you, each and every councilman on this council knows a drug house is useful to their visitors. But, you know, we, we believe in the public safety system, and yet, it's not being addressed. So, do you believe that you could implement a plan immediately?
Oh, definitely, I think we can, and to hit on your point of the marijuana, that was my biggest fear, is, you know, I, I'm all for the marijuana, I'm for medical marijuana. I mean, I, I have, I've used the pieces that go through seizures, my son's spinal disc without me has seizures, so I'm very committed to marijuana, um. But to hit on that impact of the marijuana is, that's, that was my biggest concern, whenever it was passed, is we, we have nobody grown right now. Like, where's this marijuana come from, do we, is there a way we can track it? Like, hey, did you guys buy this from this dispensary, or did you buy it from here, or is this illegal, you know, uh, something that's not legal, and that just came in, because we don't know if that's mixed with some, I mean, the way fentanyl's mixed, this, all it takes is just a little dose, and that's it, it can kick out anybody. So, the, the medical and the recreational, I mean, that, that's one thing that I would really like to work on with you guys with, to make sure that it's from here, to make sure that we're getting from here, and, uh, from off the streets, which is dangerous, and I would definitely want to implement a drug force right away. And alcohol, drug and alcohol, I mean, that's, like, like I said, I get out of it hard because it, it affects me too. You know, I got family here too, and I see them go through stuff, and I see, you know, my family losing stuff like that, and I think, you know, it, it's just, this, this needs to stop. And we, we can't attack it, but we also need the court system to be on our side too. So, whenever we bring them in for it, that, you know, why, why can't we hold somebody here, why do we not have a big facility? Like, we can hold somebody for two consecutive years here, we don't have to send them to federal and retire. Like, why can't we work on our own people and housing, our own people, and bringing counselors and help them while they're in there? Like, we need to start addressing this issue. Also, just not leaving it up to officers, that, you know, the courts need to address it as well.
My, my second question is, um, you know, I believe that, you know, we're working relationships with agencies that need to deal with. And, and I believe that that's gonna be a role that you'll have to play, you know, but, you know, with these outside entities too, you know, and the lady that just spoke before you. I believe that, you know, they need to be brought to the table with us so that we can send a clear message to each, each, uh, department or agency that's coming here. You know, how that we can work together and unify our efforts, you know, no matter what it is, child abuse, or drugs, you know, and there, there's so many areas right now that have escalated because of the pandemic. You know, and then a lot of households that we have in one house. You know, how could you address that, or we could have that relationship with outside agencies better?
But, I mean, that's one thing that we need to be, especially with law enforcement, is we need to work closely with everybody, C T S, you know, I H S, um, detention. I mean, that, it's, to me, it's, it's just kinda crazy, you know, detention is so far away from law enforcement now, or you know, the sheriff, like, when can we sit down and help out with that, or F B I, have them bring you, you know, saying, hey, we got this going on, can we work with you, we start this drug force, we start setting different cases, or, you know, we need to have a working relationship with everybody. And right now, we kinda don't, it's kind of widespread, and it's hard, it's hard being on the same page with detention because they're different. I've never been in a law enforcement entity where detention was so separated from the police department. And that's hard, it's a, it's a hard working relationship, like, if you think about it, let's say we bring somebody in and the intention's like, oh, well, we need to accept them, you gotta need them to I H S to get them cleared, and that's eight hours of police officers sitting up there. That's eight hours of police officers off the street, and that's what hurts us so bad, like, we just, there, there's just so much stuff that we can work on that needs to be worked on. And that we, we could have one good working relationship, we just, we just need to exercise and do it.
I, my third question is, you know, with three parts to six thirty eight, O S T, D P S, you know, um, can you explain to me if you have the knowledge about the process of six thirty eight? And, you know, the ability to go in there because of I H S goes out to six thirty eight, if you had more funding than, you know, than the system that's in place to I H S, you have the comment of the six thirty eight?
Well, I know the six thirty eight program is the, um, standard B A, that gives us the funding to run our law enforcement. Now, I believe that two thirty is, I think, almost any, every year you could write up a new process, or you know, to try to get more funding. And then you submit that, but their, their biggest contract times is every five years. So, whenever you submit your big contract, which a lot of tribal organizations do not do, is they do not go by the five-year standard, they just submit one big contract, so then you're not getting that next funding for the next year. Because you're not getting that three percent for officers' money, or the, you know, co-op rate, or anything like that, they're not implementing. Or say, hey, gas prices are gonna, you know, let's, let's do that, or, like, you know, it's just one standard funding, but it shouldn't be, it should be a five-year budget that grows every year, and that, that's how you go after funding. And then, and that's what we need to start doing, so, because every year it's just the same funding. If we, if we start implementing what needs to be done, then that's how we get more funding. And that's how we do, what we gotta do is we gotta go to D C, we gotta argue for funding, we gotta fight ourselves for it. Because, though, if you just sit back and, and we help you, we need, we need to fight for that funding.
Well, I think our statistics, you know, prove that, you know, we're on our foot in the whole game in law enforcement, but in our court system. So, you know, working together with the courts and the public safety division, you know, I think if we can compile statistics too, you know, that's gonna prove that there's a shortfall in our funding. My, my last question is this, you know, recently, O S T, D P S contracted the criminal investigations. And had you ever, um, experienced any work with criminal investigations or managed any actual investigators?
Um, yeah, it, well, I wanna go back real quick on the, um, the other thing about statistics that we need to get off of is just to bring someone in for intoxication. Because by the federal standards, that does not count as a stat. And we need to change their public nuisance law, which I did this in the department, that we changed the public nuisance law to fit that intoxication. So that whenever they would come in, instead of just being intoxicated in that charge, which is not a stat by federal standards, we would charge them with the public nuisance charge. Which would turn around and then, you know, most of the people who couldn't pay the twenty-five dollar fine and get out, so they'd sit two days to pay it off. And then they'll back out, and then that's what's starting giving us the stats to have more funding. Because if you just bring them in and you take it to D C and you say, hey, this is all our stats, and they look at it, and they're like, well, you got a drinking problem, you don't have you don't have a law enforcement problem. Which in reality affects us, but they're only going there for eight hours, so it's not a charge, and they don't look at it as a charge. And then another thing I wanna hit on with the detective division is, I think it's, it's new. You know, they're, they're getting into the Philippines, but one thing that I wanna address on the detective division also is it shouldn't just be federal cases. They should help out with other cases that could just go to tribal, you know? But it possibly could go federal, but they should, they should be there as well, and I believe that, you know, they, they're running a good ship, and I just think they need to be pointed in the right direction of how to keep going, and get more training to keep going. Because it's not an easy job, they, they get a lot of cases, but I just think they need to start working that case a little bit more faster. And the pandemic has slowed it down a lot, and I know it has, and that's one thing that we've been seeing also.
You know, I think, you know, there needs to be a close working relationship with the chief of police and the council too. You know, we can support each other by working together, and, and I do feel that that can be accomplished. But, you know, the council, I feel, needs to be aware of the shortfalls and anything that public safety needs out there to address, you know, a program that is effective across the board for all of our people. So, if you were selected, do you think that you could work closely with the law order committee, with needs? Um, everything that's gonna go on in that office, I think, a close working relationship is really needed there.
Yeah, definitely, I mean, communication is key to any organization that you're running, if you ain't got communication with your peers, then there's no way you're gonna succeed in this job. I mean, law enforcement is not a work or something, it, it's not, there's no way it can be. You know, it's, whenever I took over the chief of Flandre, they have, we built it from the ground up. And my, uh, communication between me and council and the lawyers was key to what we needed to get done in such a short period of time that we got stuff done. So, yeah, I mean, that's, that, to me, that is a big thing, is communication, because I wanna be able to come to you guys too and say, hey, this is where we're hurting at. Like, I ain't gonna come to you and lie and be like, oh, yeah, well, everything's going good, in reality, whenever we're suffering out there because, because of the drugs, or because of the, there's stuff that was so short, like, I wanna be able to come to you guys too and communicate with you guys on trying to address the things that need to be done to help us, be out there in the communities and help us with our response times, to help us with, you know, getting medical clearances done faster, and, and whatever we can use of it, and to be better, I'm all for it.
I think you could answer those questions I asked.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, thank councilman, councilman Yowby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, in all your years of working in the, throughout the law enforcement industry, how well would you say you worked with other jurisdictions on investigations and apprehension of those suspects?
Um, it kind of depends on what you're talking about, I know, I've been in tribal my whole career, so, I mean, that's all I've worked with. So, I've, I know our deer station, I know our, you know, our solid, I know that I would never give anybody, any one of our members of, unless it was a federal one. You know, that's the only way we can handle where anybody on this reservation is a federal one, besides that, it's our deer station, and that's where it stays. You know, I have no problem working with the other deer stations and trying to help out our, you know, trying to implement some things, but they, they need to understand that this is our reservation, this is our law enforcement, and that's the way it's gonna be. So, and we're gonna work by our standards, and we're gonna work the way that we work.
Thank you, my next question would be, you're currently employed with the O S T Public Safety Department, let me see where the weaknesses are and where it needs to be better. If you were selected as chief, would, how or where would you start implementing those, those changes to start fixing the, the, uh, areas that need to be addressed?
I mean, right, right now, we have, we do have six, um, off, non-students that are in the academy right now that should be graduating from year twenty-seven, and that's gonna help a bit, uh, whenever they come back, um, one of the things that we need to address, they can, in public safety, is working together. Um, it's, to me, it's, you know, you have east, west, our work kinda combines, so it's better. Then you have higher safety, then you have detectives, and then, you know, it's, it seems like they're all separated, it shouldn't be like that. We should all be one department, it should all be grand as one department, we should all work together, if things need to be done, we should all be out there doing it. You know, everybody needs to understand that, you started as a police officer, that's what you're doing. You know, everybody's trained to be a police officer, whenever you get up in those high ranking positions, you still need to understand where you came from, where you came from being a police officer. So, that's what we need to address, and that's what we need to start using, you should have, you know, to me, I, I don't think we should have any detectives on these. Just sit there and work, you know, why, why can't we split them up? To be working, you know, evening shift, every night shift, to where they're out there, to where we don't have to have a home call. Why should we have to have a home call whenever he could be out there patrolling too? So, I mean, we could, we could address some issues, but it can be done, but it just, you know, it just, it just needs to be done.
Thank you, my last question would be, if you're selected as the chief, how would you look into getting more funding into that department, and also, how would you move up getting more funding for more officers?
Oh, grants, grants, which there's a lot of grants out there for law enforcement, I mean, there, there seriously is. I mean, I've, I've seen grants for equipment, I've seen grants for boats, I've seen grants for, I've seen grants come to my crazy. I mean, it's just, you have to meet those standards, you have to meet the, you know, the standards of being that grant. And that's what we need to do, and that's what we need to start researching these grants, so that we can figure out if we can apply them. And if we can't apply for them, we need to start applying for them right away, because it could take up too, too, too much of that grant. So, I mean, it's, it's a big issue that I think that can be addressed in time. It's just seeking grants, because in reality, we do need more officers. Right now, we don't have thirty-nine officers. I mean, and then, and if we could get up to, I, right, if we could get up to fifty-six officers on the street. That puts two officers in the street, each. I mean, that, that, that cancels your response time, that cancels your, you know, emergency calls. The, the response time's gonna be cut, probably tricked. Because whenever officers taking a in league, and you get cleared, there's, there's another one out there. You're not having that, oh, I have to go in in thirty minutes out of response time now, because you're taking somebody to jail. So the biggest issue that I would try to see is grant money and definitely more officers, you know, on the street.
Thank you, but I, I also wanna say thank you for pointing out that we do have a drug problem in our reservation. So, uh, and I think we need to do work hand in hand, if you're selected, into taking control of our people. And, and the drug problem there. So, thank you.
Uh, thank Councilman, uh, Councilman DeBrey, like, Councilman Steele, Councilman York here, Councilman Swimmer.
Thank you, President Keller. Good afternoon, Mr. Coe. First, my first question is, you're working here under arrest?
Yep.
What is your title?
What's what?
Your title?
Um, lieutenant of police right now.
So you have officers under you?
Yep.
How many?
Uh, right now, I have four, our four. Yeah, four.
Okay. Uh, my next question is, and I, I, I hear you're compassionate for issues we're having with drugs and. I've been, I've been dealing with all the drug issues for years, I've been in that position for. Long, for law enforcement, for thirty years, and we've had those problems. Coming out of the ranks and had, had to deal with those as we come up, we're still dealing with them. You know, the only way with an actually company, break that trend is get the confidence of our communities. And we have, I'm thinking fifty-three or fifty-four officers. And how do you intend to deal with those officers that are sitting around, two to three units apart here and there? I see that we have, not go to heaven, but two or three units that are parked at visit me for hours. And I see it in front of a building, also. Can you talk about the need for officers, what should, would maybe utilizing their time better? If they were out there in communities and districts, in cluster houses? Creating some kind of community policing? Gain that confidence back with your communities, because if you don't have that confidence with your communities, you're gonna be losing the bell. And, and I know that for a fact, because we used to have community policing. And we had community members that would come up to us and tell us things. Where drugs are, where boat players, where, who the people were. And we lost that, and we went away from that, and how do you pursue bringing them back into a program that you. If you're selected, how's change this?
The biggest thing with that issue is being proactive. There, there is, there is not so much proactive right now. You know, uh, uh, we need to be proactive, we need to be more proactive. You know, I had to address the issue that one time a commander had talked to me about, being proactive, and to me, being proactive is being out. Being out controlling, you know, on a nice day, we're windows down, you know, drive by, you see them, you know, the other day, they were. Throwing horseshoes in the magazine, so I drove by and I said, I got winners, and they just all laughed at me. I mean, that, that's, that's called being proactive, and that's one thing that I wanna implement. Even as chief of police, I wanna be proactive, I wanna be out there, I wanna be in the communities. I wanna be side by side with these officers, going to big scenes or anything that they need, they need help with. I don't wanna see them struggle and they just sit in the office, that's not what I'm about. I'm about being proactive, being out there and showing leadership, and showing what we can do and what needs to be addressed. But I think community increasing and community involvement is huge. We, we need more of that. We need to be out there for, to help the community. I mean, back in the day, whenever I worked here back in the day, we used to have that. You know, you drive by, and they'll be like, hey, you know, we have a bite to eat, you know what I mean? Like, that used to be there. Now, now it's not there so much, and it, and it's kinda sad. That's why I said that our biggest assets are, you know, if we work together, we can accomplish so much. So I, I truly believe in community policing, and I think it's, it's something that I can address and something I can come, can come back.
Thank you.
Uh, thank Councilman, uh, Councilman Skip.
Good afternoon, man. Good afternoon. You know, I might bounce around here and there, some of the stuff I've been hearing, but just taking notes, Mr. Skip. Number one, I did appreciate your statements when you first started out speaking. I said that many times to a lot of people, how I found them on everything, and, and you did a lot of that on the nail. Um, you know, being a council representative, you know, us guys, we catch a lot of hell from. People because of, um, I would say, um, lack of leadership in public safety. And then it falls on us as, as councilors, when we can't get no answers for them. And, you know, like, in order to be, I get a lot of calls from, from good, well-respected authors. They want to be, who are afraid of all that, you know, going on? Um, myself personally, um, seeing a lot of people that I grew up with, that I don't recognize anymore. You know, because of this pandemic we have. And, you know, it makes us, it makes us question ourselves as leaders, you know, are, are we good enough? And being, um, council representative, you know, our job is to create laws. And, you know, law enforcement officers, their job is to enforce those laws. And our community, you know, it, it's hard for them to understand that. They, they, they think, we're the ones that enforce it, when really, we're, we're not, that's enforcement's job. And so to, to hear a lot of the comments by some of my colleagues, you know, I, I kinda, you know, I agree with a lot of it. How you just see the police officers, you know, congregating by the white shirts and minority or building hospitals or wherever, but. Those communities are lucky, and they're even having a police presence sitting there because of, what do you, restrictions? It's, it's, it's kinda hard to see a cop living around them. And you mentioned, um, you went by when you're playing, when they're playing horseshoes, and you said, I got winners. You know, actually, there was one officer that ever stopped and played horseshoes and played basketball when I was, was two, three years. But that was back when, when, um, when the D C was sweet, and you did say back, back when you started, because I can recall those times too. And so for myself, I think, you know, the board, law enforcement is involved with the community. You know, they are gonna get more assistance from the community. But, um, it, it all falls on leadership. And, you know, with the gun calls that we get in that instance, it seems like it's not an issue for. And, and that's just how I felt when I called cer- certain individuals, not, where leaders in public safety, it's like, we didn't get no. Reaction or support from, you know, and they found help with that times. So, you know, with the, if, if selected as a chief, you know, are you willing to, you know, come to the community and be with our people? And be a member, would need me?
Definitely. I mean, I feel like I said, that's our biggest thing, to, to, you know, that, I'm constantly, to me, that's huge. I mean, we're having a big problem with that. And, and I'm thankful that nobody's really been hurt, but that it's only a matter of time before something happens. So we need to, we need to start addressing these issues, and, and to me, the community, being out in the community, having community involvement is huge. Because that's who helps you. That's who ultimately helps you every single time with the community. You cannot do this job without the community.
So, you do know that. Being a chief of police, you know, you're gonna have to make decisions that will be, they, they won't be favorable to some law enforcement officers. Which will, you know, cause you to lose friendships, but, you know, your responsibility as the chief would be looking out for the. Entire reservation, you know, as you don't, as, as the leaders to protect our people. And that's next up also, but, you know, for me, crack and weed, which really needs to happen, you know, you might lose friendships and. And, I mean, that's something you can't worry about, uh, because, you know, you're taking on a big role of responsibility here. So, you know, that's, that's my encouragement to you, you know, if you're selected, you, you know, don't worry about losing friendships, because. That's, that's responsibility that comes to disposition. Um, the question I have is, did you, uh, you resigned on the reservation?
Uh, I, no, I, I resigned in our city, I'm sorry. So, you, you don't feel that that would conflict in your position in any way, right? Uh, no, I don't think so. Because, I mean, I'm, I'm hard to dedicate, you know, I come down every day to work, I stay longer than I have to, to make sure my crews has their reports done. Make sure everything's, you know, in standard with my crew. So, I mean, I, I have no problem, I mean, to me, law enforcement is a twenty-four seven job. You know, it, it has to be, especially whenever you're in leadership, because you're gonna get calls, even if you're on your day off, you're gonna get calls. And you gotta address those issues, so, I mean, I, I've been doing this for a long time, you know, I know the dates, you know, I've, I've. I've lost friendships, I've lost, you know, relationships because of this job, but this is what I do. This is my career, this is what I love, and I'm passionate about it, so I don't, I don't think it'll affect me in any way, because. I mean, this is what I love to do, and this is what I sacrifice to do.
Um, one other concern that, that comes up to us as, as our council representatives is. The concern about, um, off reservation, police officers taking women to. Um, you don't see that as a problem?
Um, i- if, the only reason why that, I would see that as a problem, and I would address that. Things would come up is if you're calling them and they ain't trying to come to work. Like, say, the reason why you have a take home unit, why anybody has a take home unit is they're subject to call. And that should be the biggest thing of why you're taking home a unit. And if you're not entering your role, and if you don't wanna come to work, then you shouldn't have to, you know. You should be, it should be parked at the P D, and you should drive to work, and you did that, and then go patrol.
Okay, and then, uh, you mentioned you were a chief of police in Flanju?
Yeah.
Um, how much, um, officers in Flanju have at the time?
That time, we only, I think, we only had like six of them, yeah, that time. It's a small, very, really small community, so.
So, coming from a, a chief of police who, who managed six officers. To a chief of police who could possibly manage seventy officers under your, your, your watch. Um, you, you're able to carry that, um, responsibility and work with?
Oh, yeah, definitely. I mean, like I said, your leadership stands out, you lead by example. So, I mean, I, it, I'm, I'm gonna be the same leader if I have one officer under me, if I have a hundred officers under me. I won't be that same leadership, the same standards, the same group of calls you're gonna have to follow, and you're gonna have to be by that, you know? And it don't matter, like I said, it don't matter if it's one or a hundred, it's still gonna be the same process, and it's still gonna be run the same way.
Okay, one last question. One of the biggest concerns we have from a lot of our peoples, when they write complaints on law enforcement officers. It's like they get a timely response back, and it's pretty much the same number text, the police officer rather than, um, individual member. Um, is there some kind of mechanism you put in place to ensure that our people's, um, um, complaint would be heard? And that they would get a, a response in writing as to the findings?
Oh, definitely. I mean, if, if, if there is a complaint on an officer, you address it. You look at the complaint, you look how serious it is. If it's serious enough that they have to be on the street, you take them out off the street, and then you address it. But the biggest thing that we need to do here at Public Safety is, we shouldn't be investigating our own officers. If something comes in, we should have a separate department that is investigating them. And that talent should be addressed, and then they bring the complaint back to us and say, hey, this is our findings, this is what we found. And then we turn around and pass it on, and if it's clear, then it's clear, if it's not, then we address that matter. But the fact that, you know, you're having investigations in the house, that's like, well, you guys investigating one of your friends, like. I mean, I don't, I don't see how that is, and I don't see how that should be working like that. We should go out to an outside entity that comes to investigate this situation. If it's something against our officers that's serious enough, that, that needs an investigation.
And, um, what about the P E testing? The P E testing to me is slap. I mean, it truly is. I could just go and walk around and pass it. Like, I, I do not feel it. I feel like if an officer can't go help somebody out of a house that's dying without them. Being out of breath about them dying themselves, then he shouldn't be on the street. I'm, I'm true to that, and I'm, I'm faithful to that, that the P E needs to be a passer fail. And if you fail it, you got three months to start bringing yourself back up to where you should be patrolling. I mean, so, so is the chief of police, is that something you would incorporate into your, in your?
I definitely would. And that, then, another thing is, I see that our qualifications are lower, why? Why are we meeting standards of shooting worse? That, I mean, I just don't get it. I don't get how you lower your standards to help other police officers, if they can't meet the standards, they shouldn't be patrolling.
All right, thank you. Any questions, sir?
Yep, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilman York here, and Councilman Spatter here, and Councilman Jumpy here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Coe here, I'm asking the same, same questions that I've asked the previous candidates, but also, if you would like me in some situations, so. What do you think personnel aside is the greatest need for our travel police force? Is it the relationship between the court system and our police force? Is it our investigative techniques and how we conduct business whenever there's a major crime in hope? Or is it a lack of more specialized personnel?
Um, I would say, I think our biggest lack in our, is, you know, what we need to address. Is the response times and the drugs. That, that is what we truly need to address. I mean, I, I look at what you said right there, you know, to me, that those could be addressed so easily. You know what I mean? It, that, that, that's not hard to take care of, it's not hard to talk to the courts, it's not hard to get more training, like, those could be addressed. Our hardest thing is our response times and then our, the, the type of relationship. Like, we need to attack that, and we need to, you know, that way.
Thank you for that answer. The following question I have is. Would you rather have a more well-rounded police force or small, small units that are, that are intact? And maintain the integrity of our police force, whenever it comes to our, our specialism needs to be? Like you said, our response times and, 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 and the drug pandemic that's going on. Would, would your recommendations be?
Oh, just a well-rounded, that we can respond to everything? I mean, I, I, I wanna please, like, that can respond to calls on time, but in the background, that's working on these drugs. You know, that your response, and you have your officers still out there working hard, and then you have the ones behind the scenes even working hard. I mean, that, that's, that's the morale that I want. I don't want this, you know, eight to five job, the, oh, how often do we, no, I, I want us to work. I want us to push, I want us to get these crimes out. You know, I don't, I don't mind dealing with some drunk guys here and there, but whenever you're dealing with these drugs twenty-four seven, that's hard. And we, we need to focus on that, and we need to start addressing that before something true that happens on the specialization, which, which, that's what it's leading to right now.
Okay, thank you for your answer again, um. The next question has to do with, uh, uh, leadership. Uh, how would you plan to, or implement inspiration in your junior officers, or those that fall within? How would that, what? How would you plan to inspire? How would you plan to inspire officers to do better because what what we've heard time and time again and seen time and time again are what Councilman Rodriguez said is is lazy, laziness. How do you plan on preparing that?
I have a sense, you know, to inspire. But that that's the thing is it's leadership. You know, it's implemented, but people in it don't want to lead. You know, you don't, what's it on? I mean, think the lazy guys can lead you into battle. You're going to get wiped out. Why, why would I do that with my officers? Whenever I, I want everybody to, whenever you're as a chief of police, you should be building people up to come and take your position. If you're not doing that, then you're not being a chief of police, you're not being a leader. We should have a structure to where they're working themselves out so somebody can come and take my job if I got the chief. You know, I should be working the younger generations up to come and take my job. That's what I should be doing. And that's what we should all, everybody should be doing that as leaders, especially on this reservation. We should be helping our younger generation become leaders to take our spots. But right now, it's it's not happening. To me, I don't see it happening. Like, there's no structure there and I want to make a structure. I want them to, I want people to come up and, hey, I want to take your job someday, come with me. That's what I want. That's how you lead by example. We want people to come at you. And that's 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 what I want to implement and that's what I want to push through to these officers, so you can be a leader. You can be a detective, you can go work for FBI. And you can do whatever your dreams are, you just got to work to do it. And I want to implement that and show them that they can do that.
Thank you for that. Um, I have one more question. The question kind of escaped me right now, so do a little bit of a question. This, this one comes next. Who do you think would win in a fight between a grilled cheese sandwich or a taco?
Taco.
Taco. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, uh, Councilman, uh, Councilman Spottier, uh, Councilman Joplin.
Thank you, Chair. So, a few of my questions that I've asked have been asked and I thank my colleagues for that. Um, I have just a few. Yeah, what role can an uncertified police officer occupy within a department?
Um, uncertified police officers, you can put them in a lot of roles that not have on the street. I mean, even if you're ready to go to academy, you start focusing on, unfortunately, I mean, just stuff that they're going to see in the academy. Start building them up to where they're that's one thing that we need to address and that we need to do is build them up before they go to academy. So you're just not hiring them and sending them off. And then they get to the academy and they don't know what's going on, then that's why you miss so much failure, right? Like, if if I want non-certifieds to come, you know, if I'm hiring, I'll, I'll want to build them up before they go to academy so they could have passed the test. So I ain't worried about them coming back or let's send six because we know three are going to fail. Like, it shouldn't be that mentality. And then the next thing, I mean, we could use them for paperwork, you know, they could read through reports just to get a feel of things. We could use them in dispatch so they could see what dispatchers go through. I mean, you could even walk them through detention, like detention, see what the detention goes through. I mean, they're, the the whole aspects of law enforcement, it's huge, I mean, which all we want. So whenever you're coming into law enforcement, you need to know what these other entities are doing to you. So you get a feel of it and you know what they're going through.
Thank you. And then, can you explain how you would handle allegations made against a police officer? I, it's excessive force or conduct unbecoming?
Um, that, the same one that I hit on was a car, it it needs to be an outside entity that needs to investigate. Anything that comes against your force, you should not be investigating. And I believe that's the way. And then it needs to be somebody that, you know, had some good investigation skills that could come and address that issue.
Thank you. And then how often should a CID, CID report be given? And who should that be reported to?
What'd you say?
A CID report.
How often?
How often and who should that be reported to?
I think it's every year. Five minutes?
And who would you report that to?
I would know, five minutes, maybe, I guess. I don't know how you guys do that yet.
So just to make a clear connection to the audience and to my colleagues, can you explain what a CID report is?
Can't really explain that.
So it's a list about federal, uh, violations, crimes, um, by district and indictments. Uh, and that's just for anyone listening. So I believe a CID report should be given to, at least a minimum to counsel for, uh, review. Uh, and as well, it's reported to the V A.
Oh, is that the, yeah, you had, you were letting me send out?
Right.
That's a monthly report, actually. And it's not just that, it's also drugs and, you know, their weapons offenses and anything else that's confiscated, but that's monthly. And if it, I mean, I don't know how you guys handle it, but, yeah, you send a copy to V A. If it goes to counsel or, oh, no, or whatever else it needs to go to.
Thank you. And then my last question, did you say in, um, your introduction that you wanted to say senior manager for the V A?
No, what?
A senior manager for the V A?
No, I don't want to say that.
Thank you. That's all I have, Chair.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilman, and, uh, Councilman, uh, Joplin.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Mr. Cordier, if you were selected as the chief, how how are you planning on to improve the response time to Bigfoot sightings? I will take down, I'm taking down notes. Um, I didn't get a catch how long you were a police chief in Flanju. How many years did you serve in that position?
Years.
How long?
Two.
O- okay. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Rodriguez.
You totally don't have to ask me any questions. So you're you're representing now and you said you have four officers on you?
Yeah.
So as as a leader, which you are, make sure that that's on that, that's what they need to be correct.
Yep.
Now, you work with other officers from the other areas too as well, and you try to work back into them as well, try to try to build up the department as a leader?
Definitely.
I know you're you're lieutenant and that the department, and the way that is, but you also work with all those other officers. I was just asking if you try to spread that knowledge and wealth out?
Yeah, I mean, that, I, every one of the officers here and even my other, you know, ex-patrol areas call me and I know, you know, you guys have a question called, I'm always here. So, I mean, that, like, I would, I would rather have them call me at four in the morning, law enforcement, and do something that they shouldn't have done and mess up on. So I'm 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 always on, I'm I'm always about that, you know, that lead, making sure that they they know they have somebody there.
Uh, thank you, Councilman. Uh, additional questions? Um, seeing or, or, uh, Councilman, uh, Lieutenant Cordier, I just have a question. So with, um, cold case, uh, cold case investigations, um, how would you handle that? Um, cold cases, sorry. Oh, shit, wait.
Oh, okay. Um, cold case investigations, um, well, since we have our own detective division now, I mean, it'd be good for them to, you know, if we didn't have a little department that did actually those cold cases are addressed.
Uh, thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Cordier. I guess I was just sitting here listening to all the, uh, the questions by my colleagues and, uh, your answers to each of those, uh, questions were, um, you know, really well thought out and brought out to this governing body as to what you can do if you were selected as chief of police. Uh, I think yourself would probably know that it's a very hard job. You know, you said you have experience for two years working as chief of police. So I commend you for that because, uh, you know, I I've seen at times that, uh, you're going to come in front of this governing body who are selected as chief. You're going to come in front of law order because, you know, when you talk about community, uh, policing, you know, I really believe that's where we need to take that concept of community policing back to the communities in our, across our reservation. Because a lot of the concerns that come to this governing body is by our people, our constituents and our communities. So, you know, my question I asked to others was, um, you know, today you're a police officer, but if you were selected as a chief of police, um, and you know, today we probably have around fifty-three or fifty-four police officers, including yourself. Um, there might be times where, you know, you're shorthanded. Uh, are you willing to step into that, uh, realm of, uh, helping your, uh, your, uh, police officers as to, um, stepping in and helping, you know, when you're needed?
Oh, definitely. I mean, that that that's all about being proactive. You know, and and that's one thing that I want to do is is I want to be proactive, even that's what I am right now. I'm, I believe in being proactive, more than anything. And that's, that's, like I said before, you know, you climb the ranks, but you you need to remember where you come from. You're always a police officer. That's where you're trained from, that's 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 everything, you know? So, I mean, that that's my biggest thing is, you know, I'm I'm, I love being on the streets, I love being out there, I love being within other officers and other communities, so I would, I would definitely be out there.
Okay, thank you. And the other question I had is, you know, I think we touched on it, and that was one of my other questions, is the management of the financial side of, uh, running the Department of Public Safety. You know, you s- you still have to, uh, understand your budget, how much money you have to run your public safety. Um, you're, you still need to, uh, understand the process of the Obabasul tribes, uh, financial accounting process. Uh, right now, today, you're a current, uh, police officer, so I'm sure that, uh, you worked probably with the current uh, police chief in maybe helping process some of your paperwork, so you're, I'm kind of thinking you understand that process.
Oh, yeah, definitely. And and I'm moving the word with, you know, finance and anything like that also.
Okay, so that was just one of my, uh, questions. So the other ones is that you still need to, uh, understand that management of your financial side uh, and the other side of, uh, running, managing your, the the current, uh, the Department of Public Safety. So I just wanted to throw those out there. One other question I didn't ask the other ones, but I did kind of, it always came up in our meetings is, um, some of these communities have a police house that was set aside by the Obabasul, like, the housing authority to put police officers there to kind of live in that community. But one of the concerns that came up a while back in law order was, uh, sometimes a community might have something that comes up and they're going to turn to that police officer. A lot of times they'll say, well, I'm not, I'm off duty, or they won't answer the door. I want to know how you would, if you were selected, how would you address some of these concerns like that?
Well, I mean, I I I also fall back on to the patrol vehicles. You know, you're living in a car house. You're not paying that big of a rent, like, you need, you, that's why you're there. It's for the community. If something comes out, somebody can't respond, I mean, I I know some of them that that aren't very quick to that, but they would definitely, you know, need to address, need to know that they need to respond and come out when needed if they are.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cordier.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, any more questions for Lieutenant? Uh, I see we're agreeing on, uh, Lieutenant, so thank you very much. Uh, thank you again, too. And if he's going way outside, we'll have to process him very soon. Thank you. Uh, Council, so I know that, uh, I see people getting up and walking around, so we want to take a five-minute break. And we'll bring, uh, yeah, five minutes and then we'll get a next person in here, so just take five, Council, and, uh, do what you need to do.